All right, time being seven o'clock, I'll call the April 20th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which is general law, chapter 38, section 18. In the governor's March 15, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people they may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. At this moment, I'd like to take a roll call for attendance. I'll start with Selectman Triano.
Present.
Thank you. Selectman La Blank.
Present.
Thank you. Selectman Daniels.
Present.
Thank you. Selectman Sad is absent, and I am Selectman Lamash. So that is four of us for a quorum. Before we get started, I would ask the public for a moment of silence and prayer for a wonderful lady, Carol Adams. Carol was Oxford's longest-serving election worker. She was the first appointed in 1976 and served until the year 2020. She also served for years on the Hannah Howard Fund Committee. Mrs. Adams was a member of the Oxford United Methodist Church in the Order of the Eastern Star, which is the Clara Barton chapter. She volunteered at the Oxford Ecumenical Food Shelf. Mrs. Adams was predeceased by her husband, Adam, and is survived by her daughter Laura Wilson and son Jonathan La Breton. If you could just remember this wonderful lady, please. Thank you. All right, first item on our agenda is the Municipal Clerk's Week proclamation, and I have a proclamation to read into the record. This is whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-odd and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Arcs Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the selectmen of the town of Oxford, do hereby recognize the weeks of May 2nd through May 8th, 2021, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week in the town of Oxford, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Michelle A. Jenkins, and her assistants Andy Morgan and Thomas W. Sullivan for their vital services they provide in their explanatory dedication to the town of Oxford. And this is given under our hands as 20th day of April, 2021, and it's signed by the entire board and our town manager. And I see that we have a couple of our... We have Michelle and we have Ann, I see. I don't know if you'd like to say anything, or I'll let them talk, and then we'll go to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Tom is here. He just doesn't have his video on right now. We just want to thank you very much. It's been a very busy, you know, few months and whatnot, and I do have to, you know, I really appreciate the staff. I couldn't do it without Ann and Tom and Laura over there at the senior center, who, you know, spends a lot of time with us, helping out when she's able. So we have a great team working there, and we're getting a lot of things changed and accomplished. So thank you again.
Very good. Thank you. Board members, would you like to say anything else? No. Well, I, representing the board, do thank all three of you. You are credit to the town. You always got those smiling faces and the nice, helpful words to help the public as well as us board members through our daily and weekly things that we have to do with the town. So it's very well recognized, and we thank you for attending tonight, and congratulations. All right, next item on our agenda is the VFW Post Anniversary Proclamation. I have a proclamation for that to read also. This is recognizing the 75th anniversary of the VFW Post 5663, where the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 5663 was chatted in February of 1946. And whereas the VFW Post 5663 fosters camaraderie among United States veterans of overseas conflicts, and whereas the VFW Post 5663 serves veterans, military, and greater Oxford community, and where the VFW Post 5663 ensures that all veterans are respected for their service, receive their earned entitlements, and are recognized for the sacrifices they and their loved ones have made on behalf of this great country. And whereas the VFW Post 5663 celebrated its 75th anniversary on February 2021, therefore be it resolved that we, the selectmen of the town of Oxford and the town manager, do hereby congratulate and commend the veterans of the Foreign Wars Post 5663 on this occasion of their 75th anniversary of the organization, and further extend appreciation to the VFW Post 5663 for its vital contribution to the Oxford community. And this is given under our hands as 20th day of April in the year 2021, and signed by the entire board and the town manager. And also, I, on behalf of the board, congratulate them. That's quite an accomplishment. I don't know if there's anybody from the VFW.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as...
Yes.
...my office had been, had reached out, and because of the Zoom difficulties, their VFW commander said that he really appreciated the invite. He looked forward to celebrating the 75th anniversary as the coming year, but would not be here in attendance this evening. So I just wanted you to know that.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you. That's still a great accomplishment for that post, and we thank them for their service all these years. The next item on our agenda is the VFW Memorial Day Parade Request. This is requested by the same Post 5663, and they would like permission to hold the parade. And at this point, parades are not allowed until Phase 4, which of the Step 2 of the Massachusetts Reopening Plan. But I would, I would move that the board approve the request to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 31st, 2021, subject to the parades being allowed under the Massachusetts Reopening Plan and approved by the Oxford Board of Health and the Police Department.
I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve that. Any comments? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's, I believe that was Megan. You said yes?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. No problem. So that's four and affirmative, one absent. They are definitely approved. Hopefully, we'll be open enough for that, to have that nice parade. All right, next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a special permit for earth removal. And this is the applicant is S&amp;K Development LLC, 19 Oxford Road. I'll read the notice into the record. Into the accordance with provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 18, the Oxford Board of Selectmen has received an application from S&amp;K Development LLC, 710 Main Street, PO Box 744, North Oxford, Mass. 11537, for a special permit for earth removal on located at 19 Oxford Road, Oxford, which is Assessors Map 09, Parcel A-21. A public hearing will be held before the Oxford Board of Selectmen regarding this matter on April 20th, 2021, at 7:15 PM via Zoom. Written comments from the public will be accepted before or during this hearing. So with that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's four and affirmative, one absent. The public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we continue any further, I just need to let you, the board, and the public know that I am in abutter to this property. With that being said, I am going to be recusing myself from any actions of the board for this matter.
Okay, that's very well noted. So there'll be three of us who are able to vote on this this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, I am, this is Sean McDonald, 6 Oxford Road. I abut the proposed earth-removal property. I'm like directly across, so.
Okay, well, that's exactly, what I'm going to do is just ask people that are going to talk to just state their name and address for the record. And so that's any abutters, and I believe Jared Dufall is here to help us with comments and questions. So I'll open it up to the applicant first and kind of explain what you're going to do and give the board an idea.
Hi, my name is Mika Lasilla, and I'm from S. Channel 8 Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of S.K. Development, the property owner. And I'd like to first get a technicality. We are missing one board member. You're missing, and since it's a special permit, we need four votes. So my, my first off question is, is how are you going to proceed with the public hearing? Since we've had a member recuse themselves.
Yeah.
We need a super majority.
Then I guess what we're going to have to do is postpone this to a future, maybe a... Let's see, when, we're talking what? The end of May? Yep, so May 26 is our next, 25th?
May 25th, yes.
May 25th is our next meeting, so we'd have to postpone it till then.
And I, I notice I see Michael Conan here. He's one of the property owners. I didn't know if he had any comment on that, but I'm just, from a legality standpoint, I'm a little concerned how we, how do I move forward since we had one member recuse themselves for being in a butter, and I'm down a member to vote.
Yeah, well, that's the only thing I can say at this point, is that to meet the law, we'll have to postpone it till the earliest date we have is May 25th. But Jen, do you have something?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if you want. I can try to get legal counsel on the line. Maybe we can postpone the meeting, the hearing here a little bit later in the meeting and to see if they can come up with a solution, because there are some time constraints related to the applicant's ability to have it heard before the board. So I just, if, if the board will allow me to try to reach out, and I'll try to do that as we potentially continue through the agenda. And if we can return to it, that'll be fine. If not, and we have to actually postpone, we'll know better what the conditions are.
Okay, but in the meantime, then we should close the public hearing.
No, I wouldn't close the public hearing. I would, you know, I want to say, put it in a bay. So I was going to say, return to the public hearing, you know, give me, you know, in 10 minutes' time or something like that.
So.
You can keep it open, but just you won't hear any commentary until
Okay.
return to it, okay?
So we'll just, we'll, we'll leave it open, and then we'll come back to this agenda item.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so then let's go on. Let's go on to our next agenda item, which is DPW Lease With Option To Purchase Agreement. This is for a 10-wheel truck, a six-wheel dump truck, and aerial forestry truck. This is a purchase agreement to lease the three vehicles, which was authorized by the June 2020 Annual Town Meeting. There was a second vote at the Special Town Meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease-purchase finance agreements. The vehicles are a 10-wheel dump truck, a six-wheel dump truck, and an aerial forestry truck. I guess we need to have two votes. So the first vote would be to move that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described on Exhibit A of Schedule Number 1, dated April 9, 2021, of the lease with the option to purchase agreement number TE2282, dated as of April 9, 2021, between the town of Oxford, which is Lee C., and All-American Investment Group, L.C., which is Lee S.O. And that would be that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, so we have that motion and a second. Any comments? Not hearing none, then I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's four and affirmative, one absent that particular motion carries. The second motion is to move that the agreement substantially in the form presented to this meeting is in the best interest of the town for the acquisition of such equipment, and the board hereby approves the entering into the agreement by the town and hereby designates and authorizes Town Manager Jennifer Callahan to execute and deliver the agreement on the town's behalf with such changes thereto as Ms. Callahan deems appropriate, and any related documents, including any payment request form requesting funds for the vendor payable account necessary to consummation of the transaction contemplated by the agreement. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Exhibit E of the contract that we provided requires signature of the board, the Board of Selectmen via the chairman. So in previous agreements such as this, we did for the Street Sweeper, I think, back in 2018, there was a motion for a vote to authorize the chairman to sign that exhibit or that page. So I don't know if that needs to be added in there and spelled out explicitly, but I just wanted to mention that.
Then I guess we could add my name with the where the, the agreement by the town hereby designates and authorizes Town Manager Jen Callahan and Chairman Dennis Lamash to execute and deliver the agreement on the town's behalf with such changes thereto as Ms. Callahan and Chairman Lamash deems appropriate. Does that work?
I, I think that should suffice. So back in 2018, it was a vote to authorize the chairman of the board to sign that exhibit, which was evidence of the adoption of the governing body of Exhibit E, Lessie Resolution. So that's kind of the verbiage from the minutes I pulled from that meeting. So I think that that should cover us or cover the board.
Four members, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm a little, I'm a little hesitant to make the motion on this because there's a couple of things that are kind of haggling in the back of my head. One is this seems like an unlimited amount here, and I'm not certain. It seems to me that there should be some sort of dollar amount on here. And then the other thing, and I may be wrong on this, but I had thought that we had done something about this at a town meeting, and I thought the town meeting indicated that we could enter into a lease agreement. I could be, I might be wrong on this. I might be getting my, my warrants mixed up. But I thought that we had only so much we could use for the lease. Does that, does that ring any bells to you, or no?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, at town meeting, they, that's what I said at the beginning. They authorized that at the the June 2020 Annual Town Meeting and also seconded in the Special Town Meeting. And I'm sure there was a money issue there, but I don't think we need to actually add that into this because we're kind of tied to that, because town meeting, they only appropriated so much.
Right. I, I do agree with that, but this motion indicates that it is, where is it? And deliver the agreement on the town's behalf with such changes thereto as Ms. Callahan, and I know you modified it to yourself, deems appropriate in any related documents, including any payment requests and requesting funds from the vendor payable account. I read that, I read that to be unlimited. And I would think that the motion should have some sort of maximum dollar amount on there. I mean, I would, I mean, I don't want to speak for the town manager, but I, I just, I'm just, I don't know. I'm just reading that, and I think it needs to have a maximum limit on that. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but those, that's my initial thought.
I agree with you, Cheryl. I just, I just presume that we couldn't go over what town meeting had authorized. So
Right.
no matter what I think, any any changes might be in like percentage or something like that. I don't know. Yeah, but I would think that we're tied to town meeting vote. I mean, that, there was only so much allowed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So the June town meeting of last year, the, the first year payments for this lease purchase financing program were appropriated in the amount of $150,000. And then at the Special Town Meeting later that year in October was the actual authorization for the board to enter into the agreement. So if you look at, and I don't know if you have the actual agreement document in front of you, but Exhibit B is the actual payment schedule for the lease purchase program, and it spells out it's over a seven-year term. Two of, two of the vehicles, the larger dump trucks, will actually be on the seven-year term, but the aerial forestry truck will fall off that schedule in year five, and the annual payments are, are spelled out there.
So, Mr.
Authorizing the, the board to enter into it in year one, and with the motion in October town meeting last year, the, the town's committed to those payments and out years.
Yeah, Cheryl, I see that, and we got an All-American Investment Group invoice, and it says right there, 132,721,54. So that, that would tie us into that. And that, that states just for that, for the dump truck, the, the two dump trucks and the aerial forestry truck. And that's, that's what she'd be signing on the next page.
All right, I see what you mean. Okay, um, so can we, do you mind if we modify the motion? That we, if we, if we not to exceed the amount that was set forth in the prior town meeting approval?
Did you get that? Yep.
Okay.
We got, we got that.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I, I missed the other part of the conversation, but I do want you all to understand that the motion's actually been written very specifically by legal counsel, and it's the way that they have to appear in order for, let me see, I can...
It's from the attachment.
Hold on.
Attachment E in there.
Yeah, if you look under Attachment E, under Lessie Resolution, you'll see the actual governing body language. So I'm just putting it, you might actually nullify the entire motion and the intent if you, if you actually alter it. It's very standard language that has to be put in, but it's legal lease language. And it wasn't something we invented. It was something that's been used over and over. That's considered acceptable for lease arrangements. I just want to point that out to board.
So what do you think, Cheryl?
Um, hold on, I'm giving two, it's like...
Yep, no problem.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
No.
This is Selectman Triano.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Yes, you can.
Um, I just, I have a question. Thank you. I'm sorry, and I know it's difficult because my face is there today. But, um, I know we're talking about not, Jen had just mentioned that we shouldn't modify the motion, but Jared just clearly said that we needed to modify the motion in order to comply with how we've done it in the past. So I would, I would not feel comfortable if we didn't modify the motion, but I also don't want to make it so that we can't get the equipment that we need. So I don't know if maybe we need to look into this a little bit further, or if you can comment on that.
Ms. Triano, if, if I may, that, that was just to say, you know, again, as Ms. Callahan had said, the, the town council is very specific. They did explain that to us of what this language needs to entail. I just wanted to make sure that the Exhibit E that there was, and I don't know if we need to be explicit, if it needs to be an additional motion. Maybe, maybe Madam Manager, you can comment on this from your discussions with legal counsel, just to get the sign off from the board chairman, that's all, on that form in particular. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't hear it in that language, that's all. So I wanted to point that, point that out.
Right, right, and that was my question as well, because it's in the past, it's been up to the board to sign it, up to the chair to sign it. I also am reading that this doesn't really include the board in this, in this agreement. So I'm curious, I guess, why it's different now than it was last time. And that's not, that directed at you, Jared. That's more directed at, on the town's end, um, why it seems like we're deviating this time.
Jen?
All I know, that was the language that we had gotten from the lease company in order to be able to go forward. It was language that had gone through with legal counsel. I didn't know exactly, uh, because I missed part of the conversation, uh, as I was talking with legal counsel about the other matter, what specifically you'd like to do. I mean, maybe you create a third motion so that if, if something, you know, isn't determined to be necessary or needed, whatever that third motion might be, it wouldn't preclude the other two motions that might be the proper legal form to present. I, I'm sorry if I missed that, um, and I missed that conversation. So I can't, I can't actually make a comment about what that, that motion, additional motion you were going to make. I just was pointing out that that was the legal language that we wanted to be able to go forward with because in the past, we had a little problem with that language, um, in the way that it was presented at town meeting. I don't want to do that again, you know, so not, not for, for the DPW directors sake. So I, what, what it is that you're going to try to, to, to make the motion to, to change.
All right, well, go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, madam manager, I, I'm just looking at the, the minutes from back in 2018 from when we, um, we entered in the lease purchase agreement for the street sweeper. And it was requested, this is the language, um, you know, from the minutes verbatim. DPW director Dival has requested at the board, vote to authorize the chairman of the board to sign page 15, which represents exhibit E in, in the agreement, which will evidence the adoption of the governing body of exhibit E lessy resolution. The lessy resolution also needs to be attested by one additional person who can witness the passage of the resolution. So that, the authorization for the chairman to sign that, I didn't hear in that language. So I just wanted to point that out. So if that needs to be a separate motion, you know, as long as it doesn't override anything, the previous motions from council, um, then maybe that's, that's how we go forward.
Sure. Um, so, and I can't remember off the top of my head right now, Jared, if this is the same exact company or not. But regardless, if, if, if that's what the motion is to make sure that we're providing for the additional execution signature per the, the lease company, then I would just make a third motion and state that.
Okay. Yes, it is. It is the same leasing company.
But don't change the other two.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right. Got you now.
Okay. All members, what do we think? Want to make?
I think we should make the motion as originally read by you before the other two amendments were added to it. And then if we, if the rest of the board feels necessary to grant you permission to represent the board with your signature on the form as a separate motion.
I would second that.
All right. I'm not going to read it again, but I'm sure our secretary can get it straight. So we'll go with the original motion, the second motion. And we have a motion and a, and a second on that motion. So not here.
Question. Um, I, and forgive me, but it seems like it's very different than it was last time. Why are we switching the authority from the board of selectmen to the manager's office? Is that what we did in 2018 as well? I don't have that paperwork in front of me.
It's, it still gets looked over by the chairman. So the exhibit E, the highlighted section in exhibit E.
No, I'm talking about the paperwork from 2018 that I don't have in front of me. Why we're switching this to the town manager's authority instead of the board's authority? Because it seems that it was the board's authority in 2018.
Uh, Ms. Troyano, it, it's not. This is the same. The forms are essentially the same. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I just wanted to clarify because I have the 2018 agreement in front of me. That, that's why I was asking. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So any more comments on this motion, motion number two? All right, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. So motion two, as I read it originally, passes. So now do we want to put another motion on the table where the board would allow me to, uh, sign exhibit E for the board to represent the board? And I would also say that we also make sure that, uh, the spending doesn't go over what the, uh, town voted on, which is what, 150,000?
That's for year one payments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's for year one. All right. How's that sound? Is that then satisfy people on the board that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. According to exhibit E, it can be, um, signature of the secretary, board chairman or other member of the governing body. So it can be yourself. It could be anyone for that matter. So, um, I would make, I would, uh, I would make that motion.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right. And you're happy with the not exceeding the amount that town meeting authorized?
Yes, sir.
That's in that same motion. Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments? You got all that? All right, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Four in affirmative, one absent. That is, motion number three is approved on that lease agreement. Fantastic. Thank you, Jared, for adding, uh, the details on that also. Thank you. All right. Jen, are we still, how are we doing with, with, uh?
I think we, if we return, um, and continue the hearing, I, I will give you some more information, Mr. Chairman, if you want to call for.
All right, then let us, uh, go back to a public hearing for the special permit for earth removal by S and K Development.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have spoken with legal counsel and as it is typically true for a special permit, that you would need the super majority. Um, and having had one board member already recused and having the absence of another board member, the recommendation from legal counsel would be, uh, one, uh, to see if the applicant would be willing to, consent to extend, um, or continue the public hearing, uh, to possibly the first, uh, meeting in June. Um, and the reason for that is, um, it, at this point in time, the applicant probably does not want the board, um, at this point, without having, um, knowledge about, uh, the fourth member's absence today, being able to be here, um, for the next, uh, meeting. But if they were to invoke, uh, the rule of necessity, um, basically that would mean that the, uh, recused selectmen could, uh, participate, um, as a board member, uh, to advance, um, or not advance, uh, the permit application process. And I, and I think the applicant would not necessarily want to do that, um, at this point in time, uh, because it could be challenged, uh, by, in a, in a butter, um, at a different point in time. But if the applicant would be willing, um, to take the first option to continue to do a mutual continuation, that would only require a super, a, a, a simple majority of the board, which, um, you do have three here. So, um, I would, um, you know, recommend to the board, um, that they ask the applicant, um, if they would be willing to do that. And if so, um, obviously we'll have a better read at that time, uh, about being able to provide that super majority and continue the hearing, uh, to that date in time, uh, rather than invoking the rule of necessity at this time.
All right. Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Nico? Or is, or is that your first name? I'm sorry.
Yep. I see, I see one of the owners, Michael Conan is here. I would assume that he would agree with the continuation. I had spoken on the phone while we were on hold to, uh, with Mr. James Smith, one of the other owners. And he seemed to acquiesce to the idea, yeah, we should probably continue this because we don't have a board member. And I would think that the other owner would agree. I think that would be a wise decision to do that you have everybody present, that you can vote on it.
All right. Then, um, I would entertain a motion to, uh, continue this public hearing. And our first meeting in June.
That motion.
I second that motion.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. Any comments? And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Obstinate.
Oh, okay. And I'll say yes. Uh, that's three in affirmative, one abstention, one absent. So we will continue this, uh, public hearing, uh, first meeting in June. And we thank you all for attending and coming. Uh, we're sorry for the imposition. And we'll see if we can do better in June. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is approval of the annual town election warrant. So.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Uh, the town clerk has, uh, provided you with the annual town election, which, uh, is slated to be on May 18th. It's, it actually cites the precincts. Um, it will be held on May 18th, uh, with the polling hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. For the following, uh, purposes, uh, they will be, uh, candidates in offices in the area of Board of Selectmen School Committee, Board of Library Trustees and the Southern Wester County Regional Vocational School District Committee. And, um, we would need your, um, support of this, um, so that we can actually post it for the upcoming election.
Quick, quick question before we move. Do we have to close out the public hearing?
No, we, we extended it to June.
Okay, sorry.
So we opened it, so we didn't want to close it. We wanted to extend it so that, uh, we can read. Okay. But good, good thing checking on me. So I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the annual town election warrant.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Then I will say, oh, and we have a second. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the town election warrant and a second. Any comment? And I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's four in the affirmative, one absent. That, uh, election warrant is approved. So now we go to the approval of the annual town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. Uh, since this evening in front of you, you have, uh, the warrant that, uh, has been placed before, uh, our legal counsel. And, uh, you have a total of 22 articles. Uh, the last meeting I had said we might have, uh, 23, but we recognize that one article that was asked to be submitted actually, um, gets, uh, dealt with or handled, not within an article form, but within the regular budgetary process. Um, we had that from our finance director. So you have 22 articles before you. Um, the first half of those 22 are mostly routine, uh, housekeeping articles. Um, the first article, uh, would be, uh, to hear reports of town officers and committees. Uh, the second article would be prior year's bills. Uh, the third article would be just the, um, acceptance of any chapter 90 highway state aid. Um, that this year will be in the amount of 507,767 dollars. The fourth article is, um, with regards to revolving funds and, um, the spending limits related to that. And, uh, we have that on the, the actual, um, warrant every, uh, year. And, uh, the next, uh, article has to do with being able to, um, accept foster care reimbursement for foster care, uh, transportation. That was a request coming from the school that would article five. Article six has to do with tailings. Um, as you know, we've been making changes in the, uh, treasure collector's office to make improvements to the, um, uh, processes that they deal with. And we just actually, um, finalized our first, um, operational procedures through a grant. And one of the things that came about was to notice that we did not have the adoption of that particular MGL to, uh, deal with tailings. Um, so this section actually, um, deals with the funds that are held, um, by the town that have been deemed abandoned. Um, so that would be that article. Uh, the next article would be, um, article seven, which has to do with our tax title revolving account. Again, that's a housekeeping article that removes the tax title revolving fund from chapter 73 of the general bylaws and establishes the tax title collection revolving fund, um, that was approved at, uh, fall town meeting. So it's not necessary to be in part of the general bylaws. And so legal counsel thought it was best to separate that. But again, a housekeeping article. Um, the article eight has to be, um, related to the TNC per ride assessment program. This is, uh, appropriating, uh, funds from the DPU ride assessment, um, program. In this year, uh, this will amount to 1,151 dollars and 80 cents. So we have to accept that as part of a provision from, um, the Commonwealth. And these are, uh, funds that come through that get appropriated based on, um, Uber and Lyft, uh, drivers' assessments. Article nine, uh, is, uh, the compensated absence fund. Um, again, uh, Massachusetts state law allows municipalities to create this type of fund, uh, to save for future payments, um, that employees are titled to receive upon leaving town employment. And this reserve fund allows a municipality to handle, um, and plan for employees departures. And in this year, we're asking for $50,000 from free cash, um, to be put into that, um, absence fund. Article 10 is the stabilization fund article. Um, as you know, it's been a major, um, management priority. And I know it's a priority of this board as well, um, to continue to put savings, um, into our stabilization fund, which is also known as the rainy day fund. This allows us to accumulate savings to defray costs for major capital of improve, uh, improvement projects and or unexpected emergencies. So this, uh, funding policy that we put in place, um, under my direction, um, is calling for another, uh, solid, um, deposit. And this year it's $250,000, uh, that will be going into the, um, stabilization fund from free cash. That will put us up to, um, almost 1.8 million dollars, uh, which is more than a sixfold increase, um, from, um, several years ago. The article 11 is, uh, the OPEB, uh, funding article. Again, this is a very, um, routine article in which, uh, we had established an, uh, OPEB, uh, funding policy. And, uh, based on that policy, um, this, uh, will allow us, um, to make a contribution of $60,000 into the OPEB, uh, trust fund. And, uh, once again, the, um, overall performance of the trust fund, um, has been very good. Um, and it's up over $5 million and, um, we want to continue making these, um, you know, efforts every year for small increments until we're fully funded over the next, um, I think about 20 years that we'll be there. The next article is article 12, which is, um, a transfer article. Uh, we are cleaning up, uh, where we may not have spent all monies that might have been appropriated for a particular project and or, uh, if, uh, the project, uh, where we may have thought we needed the money, may have, um, not needed that money, um, in its entirety. So art, that, this has to do with both article 12 and article 13. So there are two different, uh, funding sources. may have not needed that money in its entirety. So this has to do with both Article 12 and Article 13. So there are two different funding sources. This is to help support some of the projects that the DPW Director continues to highlight as part of our capital improvement plan, and we're just trying to up it so that we can get the projects done a little bit ahead of schedule. So the first transfer is from what was originally appropriated for the splash pad irrigation system. And what we're trying to do is actually transfer it to general town irrigation. That would be in the amount of $45,137.88. The DPW Director has definitive thoughts and ideas about trying to work with the rural field in trying to actually put in some irrigation there. The splash pad irrigation system never proved to be feasible, and so it was a great idea in the beginning, but once the engineers and the former DPW Director looked into it, it wasn't something that was going to be feasible from that perspective. Article 13 is looking to transfer funding that we appropriated for streetlights to the Carbuncle Beach Paving Project. This will allow the entire parking lot to actually be paved instead of doing half of it this year and then half of it in another year. That totals an amount of $50,000. The original purpose for the streetlights is our former DPW Director thought it was going to actually cost more to replace the housing units, and it was anticipated through the National Grid Program. It was estimated that that's what it would cost, but we were able to handle it without having to expend that, that resource. So that will require a transfer authority as well from town meeting. Article 14 has to do with the lease purchasing finance agreement from the DPW Ford F-550 with chipper body and plow. This will be the funding for the first year payment that was appropriated in June 25th, 2020, at the annual town meeting. And Article 15 has to do with the overall vehicle leases that we were just discussing and actually folding in this F-550 so that it would be the three vehicles as well as the F-550 for making fiscal 22-year payments. Article 16 will be the budget article in its entirety. Article 17 will be the capital outlay, which will be the omnibus article that would seek to invest in repairing and maintaining the town's existing infrastructure and fund that will be necessary to find and fund for equipment needs. Article 18 has to do with the Carbuncle Pond. There is an article that's been put forward by the Conservation Commission that restricts motorboats, vehicles, or other equipment that are gas or diesel-powered on Carbuncle Pond. Article 19 is a storm water bylaw. It will actually seek to repeal Chapter 66 and 67 of the general bylaws and replace them with a consolidated concise bylaw that incorporates the MS4 federal requirements. Article 20 is another Planning Board-sponsored article. It's on cluster development. It implements low-impact development practices to preserve open space. Article 21, another Planning Board article that has to do with on-street parking offsets. It allows legal on-street parking spaces to be counted towards the parking requirement and applies only to non-residential uses. And Article 22 is about hotels, motels, and country ends, and in the industrial district zones, it adds hotels, motels, and country ends to allowable uses in the industrial district. And that would complete the entire warrant that tonight we're looking for the board's approval so that we can go ahead and post it for the annual town meetings.
Thank you, Town Manager. Board members, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a quick couple of questions. Madam Town Manager, the, I was just going back to our March meeting, and I was kind of checking through. This was when the warrant was with the, with Town Council. And I was just checking through. How did, can I, I'm really confused on just a couple of them. How did we? Didn't we at the last meeting vote for just Robinson's, Robinson Pond for the, for that? For the, I think for the diesel or, or, or gas boats, and now they want to roll in Carbuncle, but do they want to roll in anything else or just Carbuncle? Because I'm, I'm, no, we have more bodies of water out there than just those two.
Right. No, this is specific for Carbuncle. Last year, they wanted both Robinson Pond and Carbuncle. Initially, it was just Robinson Pond. And then it got rolled in that they wanted both, but the language of the warrant was specific at that time only for Robinson Pond. And the explanation in all of the finance committee meetings in the hearings with the Conservation Commission, which it wasn't sponsored by at that time, but there was consent and support for it from the Conservation Commission at that time, but the residents at that time understood that, you know, it was okay to take up Carbuncle Pond for consideration in the spring, which is what we're doing here this evening. It's not for all ponds. I do know that there has been discussions, I think, in the Conservation Commission meetings about the desire to help improve water quality across all the water bodies, but this article that was put forward with our conservation agent and our conservation commission is specific to Carbuncle only.
Okay, then the other thing, and again, I might just not be following it correctly, but when we talked about the omnibus capital outlay article of 1.7 million, will you, will you, that's all of the capital spending we're planning on doing, correct?
You're muted.
You're muted?
I'm so sorry. So, so the actual, the appropriations are broken down as we always do them. There will be you know, elements that come from free cash, there's elements that will come from different funding sources, and that amount I can put, I believe it is at 1.7 million, but then there is also a borrowing authorization request that's coming through from the fire department as well. But it's the whole totality when we say the, the capital outlay, you know, will, will encompass all of those things.
Right. And I think we had the breakdown of what that was going to involve when you did your budget presentation to us. I'm, I'm assuming like in the past, I think you've always done like a slide chart or slides that people knew where, what that would, so you'll be doing that again? Yeah, so.
Yes, I would be doing that again. Yep.
Okay, okay. And then my last question is that placeholder one, I think it says Article 2, pay unpaid bills for prior fiscal year. I, I think in the past, we've always had to know what they are. Do we just have like one or, or two that need, that didn't get paid? Is that what that is?
No, it always, we never put it in the warrant. The warrant is considered to be generalized. It's the motion that comes technical. At this point in time, I'm not aware of any, so we always put it as a placeholder in case something comes up. Last year, we put it as a placeholder, and something came up after town meeting, and you know, it wound up actually being deferred till the Fall Town Meeting. But there's none on my radar right now, but it would be if there were, it would only be in the motion and not here.
Okay, got it. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? All right, not hearing any, then I would entertain a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant.
I will make that motion.
Okay, we have two people making a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the town meeting warrant. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. So we have, and I'll vote yes. And it's four in affirmative, one absent, the town meeting warrant is approved. So that brings us to the Town Manager's evaluation. As last meeting, Selectman Triano asked me when this would happen, I said this meeting. And all the, we have four of us that submitted our evaluations, but we have Selectman Sad who is unable to participate at this moment. So Selectman Triano emailed me and asked me if I would have respect for Selectman Sad and to postpone the evaluation to a future date. And the earliest we could probably, unless Selectman Sad comes back soon, it will be sometime in June or July. So just being courteous to her email, I would make a motion that the board vote to postpone that. Oh, and this can only happen, I checked with legal counsel, providing the Town Manager was an agreeant, and she is deferred that whatever the board decides to do, she will be fine with that. So so I would entertain a motion that we postpone the Town Manager's evaluation until Selectman Sad can participate in the process. And I would also ask that the summary that I have compiled be amended to include Selectman Sad's evaluation at that time.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second to postpone. Comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What, are you thinking about postponing it to June?
Well, yeah, because our, our May meeting is kind of check full, so that's why I'm thinking, you know, and again, not knowing Selectman Sad's position, that's why I'm thinking June or July the latest. But that's not part of the motion. It's just, you know, we're, we're just postponing until he's available.
Right, but I don't know, I don't, I don't want to drag this.
If he were available and you know, after reorganization, we could have, have it done, you know? It depends on him.
Right. Are you, so are you putting it out there indefinitely?
No, 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 no. Yeah, it's not part of my motion, but if you want to put a time element, but I'm just thinking, yeah, we don't, we don't want this to linger much beyond, you know, probably July 1st or our first meeting in July.
Right.
No matter what happens. That's just my general feeling.
I, I mean, I think that's my thought on it. I agree out of respect for Selectman Sad, you know, we should postpone it. But I think that if it's not done, I mean, I, I don't think we can let it go much later than July 1st. I mean, that's my, that's my thought on it.
You would think, you were thinking going later than July 1st?
No, no later than July 1st.
Oh, yes, yes. I would definitely agree with that. Well, our first meeting in July, whatever. And I don't know if it's July 1st, it might be July 8th, what's that? 6. Oh, July 6th is our first meeting in July, so it would be no later than that.
Yeah, I, I think I would do that out of, out of respect for, for Selectman Sad. But again, I, you know, after so long, I think business has to go on, so I would agree with you, Dennis, no later than the 6th of July.
All right, so we'll make that part of that motion that if he doesn't, isn't able to participate before that, then no later than July 6th, our first meeting. All right, is that okay to amend that motion? I had approval and a second. Is that okay?
Yes.
It's okay with me.
Okay, then, no more comments. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's four in affirmative, one absent. We will do her evaluation as soon as possible or no later than July 6th. Thank you very much, board members. Appreciate that. That leads us to Town Manager's report. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the board, the first item on the Town Manager's report is happily note that the town has a, we call it hero among us, and not that we don't know that, but Officer Daniel Osmus is going to be awarded the First Responder of the Year Award by the Central Mass EMS Corporation for Region 2. And Chief McDonald had nominated him for his heroic responder efforts during the Watch Street Fire. The officer, as we know, was one of the first to arrive on the scene, and he had quickly taken charge of a pediatric patient. He evaluated the patient's level of consciousness, removed burnt clothing from the child, assessed the level of injury, and discovered second and third degree burns over 40% of the child's body, and treated the patient for shock. The actions of Officer Daniel Osmus likely resulted in lessening the degree of tissue damage as well as stabilizing the victim from succumbing to life-threatening shock. He will be recognized on May 4th at the annual meeting and award ceremony in West Boylston. I know that we are all very, very happy for him. And I know that there will be people who will be attending, so if there's any board member that would like to do that, I know that our chief has been arranging for people to be able to attend. I know they have some that will be attending in a smaller number because of COVID, but I'm sure we can try to make it available for any board members that would like to attend. Next item is staff appreciation luncheon on May 12th, not May 12th, Monday, April 12th. We had a very successful drive-through luncheon for all of our employees who worked that day. Over 70 employees participated. They all expressed their gratitude for being thought about and to receive a delicious lunch that was prepared by our senior center culinary supervisor, Deb Bayer. And I do want to express thanks to Selectman Lamarche and Selectman Daniels for the help in packaging and handing out lunches to all our staff, but it was very much well-received, and we thank you for participating. The special Board of Selectmen meeting, I just want the board to be advised that the chairman has scheduled a special meeting to consider the approval of a quorum reduction for the upcoming annual town meeting, which is still allowed under the previously enacted COVID-19 legislation. The meeting is on Thursday of this week, April 22nd at 5:00 p.m. It should be a quick meeting. The moderator will be forwarding his recommendation regarding the subject. As you know, we didn't necessarily have to invoke it, you know, at town meetings of annual one and special, but I would say to be on the cautious side, you know, we're going to take it up again and let the board consider that. Early voting by mail. I've been in touch with the clerk's office, and the clerk has asked me to inform the board and the public that Governor Baker has signed legislation again on March 16th allow for early voting by mail to allow all registered voters, once again, to qualify to vote by mail in all elections that are held prior or on June 30th. Our town election, as you just know, because you approved the election warrant, is scheduled for May 18th. And the deadline to return completed applications to request mail by voting is May 12th by 5:00 p.m. So any registered voter can call the clerk's office or go online to request an application to vote by mail. So that will be available to our residents once again. The OCC feasibility study I put in your packets, we now have the request for proposals put out there. They were advertised on April 16th, and the proposals are due by May 13th, 2021, by 1:30 p.m. for submissions, and they'll be formally accepted and reviewed. And those who will be working with me to review those proposals are our interim director, Shelley Lambert, our Planning and Economic Development Director, Tony Sousa, DPW Director, Jared DeVal, and I will look at those submissions. In the actual packet I put in front of you, you could see that the R- In the actual packet I put in front of you, you could see that the RFP was looking for submissions related to a needs assessment, marketing analysis, operational costs of facility assessment and concept design options as part of the deliverables. As you know, we had appropriated money, the amount of fifty thousand dollars to conduct this. We started the initial reaching out to both architects and to those who are very experienced in looking at recreational programming. And then COVID hit and it became delayed, so I know we're looking forward to this and we can get them on board and get the projects moving. I know everybody would be happy about that. My sixth item on my manager's report relates to Earth Day events and cleanup events. I've been asked by our tree warden and conservation agent Judy Lockter to inform the board and the public about several Earth Day events. On April twenty-fourth, our rain barrel distribution will take place on Jocelyn Common. And I just wanted to tell you that it's really exciting. The program started out with smaller numbers of people requesting. This year, we have a banner number of people who have not just requested, but have signed up to pay for a rain barrel. Eighty residents have already signed up. And last year, we had only thirty, so that's fifty more than we had last year. So there'll be a lot of rain barrels out on the common, so if you're wondering what all those green things are, as we hand them out, it's, it's because of the success of the program. So kudos to them for getting the word out and getting people to want to do that as a conservation effort. Also, the other day, we had our seedlings, Rosa Sharon seedlings, which had arrived as part of our Earth Day work from our tree warden. And this year, we have a number of young ladies coming from the Seven Hills Center to act as volunteers. They'll be helping actually bag all the seedlings. There's more than, I think, two hundred and fifty of them. They'll be placed in bags with soil and those will be distributed on Sunday, April twenty-fifth on Jocelyn Common at one P M for anybody who would like to come and get a seedling planted for Earth Day. At first, actually, someone thought we had two hundred and fifty roses being delivered because they hadn't read the rest of it. And I went out and looked at the box and I said, I don't think there's two hundred and fifty roses in there, but then I looked a little closer, I said, Rose Sharon seedlings, maybe. I also wanted to get a message out that Sergeant Jeremy Grenette had informed my office. And this relates to the environment and wanting to clean it up. He informed my office that Casella Waste Company had just recently, once again, conducted a roadside cleanup efforts all along Route fifty-six. And during the first week of April, you know, I wanted to send out a big thank you to the area market manager for Casella, Paul Degnan, who coordinated the logistics of deploying company staff to do that, even though the, the waste site and acceptance site is up the street from that. They don't necessarily have an obligation to pick up roadside debris and trash, but they do do that. And, and it took about a week to do all of that, so it's very much appreciated by the town. We thank Casella and their partnership with the community, and I thank Sergeant Grenette for bringing it to my attention. Eastland Project, I wanted the board to know that if you start to hear from any residents at all about the Eastland Route Twenty project, it has already begun. And aggregate removal and blasting work had already started. And typically, it's going to occur about two times a week. This might make residents concerned, but the the Eastland Project Partners are responsible for informing the abutting residents when they're going to do blasting. And I know initially, they had missed one or two abutters. They've corrected that. Deputy Chief Sellers is going to be overseeing and confirming that the rock blastings are in conformance with this local and state guidelines and also that we continue to make sure abut isn't notified. But if any of the board members actually receive a complaint or concern, Chad Boardman from Eastland Partners is the person designated to handle those complaints along with our deputy chief and director of planning and economic development to forward them to make sure they get addressed and addressed promptly. But they'll be overseeing everything from the, the blasting conformance and dust and all of those things that go along with it. And I know our DPW director is also in the mix on that. Also, I wanted to inform the board that Mass DOT has reached out to my office, that they're starting to look at the overall Route Twenty project, which is a major multimillion-dollar construction project that is already starting to move forward. Once again, we hosted a forum at our Oxford High School that was attended by well over a hundred and twenty-five people. And they are looking at actually property easements and there are a number of town of Oxford-owned property parcels that go along the proposed construction corridor that will require land takings, permission, or the granting of permanent or temporary easements. So I have both the DPW director and the director of planning, which are going to review the documents in order to finalize them, and I will get them before the board. And these parcels are really right, like from Cumberland Farms and Walmart all the way up to Oxbow Road and Charlton Line. So those will be before you as soon as we can effectively review them. I also wanted the board to know that the House Ways and Means in the legislature did release their version of the fiscal twenty-two budget this past week. And it was actually last week in the, towards the end of the week. And even though the House Ways and Means proposal increases funding for Chapter Seventy, charter tuition assessment reimbursements, library aid, and regional school transportation and state-owned land pilot money, the estimates for our state aid is actually slightly less than the governor's budget recommendation, and overall, the proposed figures really don't alter the direction that we're taking or the operational picture for us. So I'm going to continue moving in that direction and who knows, maybe in the Senate, we'll, we'll go up a little bit. But you never know with whatever the final adopted state budget will be. But hopefully, it will not be in November this year because of COVID. They're moving along. And I have been in touch with both our legislators in the House to review some potential capital projects that we might not be funding this year but are important for us and if we could have some assistance. I know you know, I started a tradition of actually meeting with the legislators prior to both the House or the Senate meeting on the budget for the state and in hopes of pitching our local projects, and we have been successful. And we thank our legislators for that. And the last item is to let you know the COVID-nineteen case rates for today. Amy Grenette got that information to me this evening. We are, a total number of cases as of tonight are one thousand one hundred and thirty-one actual positive COVID cases since reporting began, and we still currently have a persistent number of cases active each week. We're still at the numbers in the fifties. We're at fifty-four this evening. We have not had any additional deaths other than the nineteen that I have reported, which is a good sign. If we can just get that number for active cases down, I know our public health nurses would be happy and we would all be pleased. One of the things I want to just continue to alert the board is that they have now opened actual vaccination eligibility up. And we want to encourage as many residents across the community to get on those sites and please get vaccinated because it will make a very, very big difference. And, and finally, I do, it's not on my, my agenda because it's something that just happened today. I do want, and I see Chief McDonald is on, I do want to give a shout out to the fire department for handling in a very expeditious way, a, what started to look like it might be a runaway rush fire up on Rocky Hill Road. And I know both he and the deputy chief were on site while two of our ambulances were, were out of town handling emergency cases. So we're very pleased that that didn't get away from us and just to remind the public, they have been issuing special high-hazard fire warnings because it is still very dry. And we don't know how this started, but it could be as easy as someone carelessly disposing of a cigarette or people having an outdoor fire or any number of things. So please be careful out there. Think of our firefighters and think of people's homes and our forests. And that would conclude my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Town Manager. All right, we'll go to Selectman Announcements. We'll start with Selectman Triano.
Good evening. I just have two quick things. I just wanted to say, I, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask for it because we can't take votes, but with regard to Officer Osmus, I think it would be nice if the board could also give him recognition. I think it's well-deserved that he's receiving the first responder of the year. And I think that we should also express our appreciation to him if that's possible by way of a proclamation as well. And then the other thing that I had was, I was also planning on mentioning all the work that Casella did. So I wanted to thank Sergeant Grenette for also recognizing them. I happened to be driving down fifty-six on the few days that they were doing it, and I just wanted to say thank you to them for doing their part to clean up fifty-six because the difference that it made was incredible. They picked up a lot of garbage along the way. And I just wanted to say thank you to them for all that they've done. And that's all that I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Selectman LeBlanc.
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Selectman Daniels.
I, I don't have anything this evening either. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Megan, you're stealing my thunder about Dan Osmus. I agree. We'll, we'll have to get something together and get it to the board so we can present it. Yeah, both him, it just, you know, you hear what Jeremy did, what Dan did, and it's just what I keep saying. I know I'm redundant, redundant, and people probably get sick of hearing it, but we're so fortunate. We have some great, great people that work for this town. And, you know, you hear about what the chief and the deputy chief did with the fire today. It's just, it's great. So we'll, we'll see what we can do with that. And that's all I had, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can make that motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent, we adjourned. We thank you all for attending and watching, and be safe.